Kevin, so let me know if you can be in.
Stand by.
Five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening. I would like to call to order the Smyrna Municipal Planning Commission meeting for April 2nd, 2020. You know, we're here under extraordinary circumstances. As you can see, we're distancing ourselves for the CDC guidelines. We do have a couple of members that aren't here tonight. Just to let everybody know they're well, safe, they have other commitments. You'll also notice during the meeting that we won't have a typical crowd in. Again, we're trying to make sure that we're following all the social distancing guidelines. We'll bring people in as needed during the various items for discussion, and we'll try to move through the meeting as best we can. So, on a personal note, for all the folks at home, you know, from the town of Smyrna, from the council and the mayor, you are in our thoughts and prayers, and we continue to hope that your family is well. We continue to hope that everyone is sheltering in place and keeping their families safe and sound during this time. And with that, we'll move on, and I would like to ask Vice Mayor Mark Atkins to lead us in prayer.
Stan?
Well, Father, we come to you today, Lord, with a lot on our minds and a lot on our hearts, Father. We just, we want to lift up a lot of people during this, this different time in our, in our world. But we say a special prayer for those out on the front lines, all of our healthcare workers and people that are doing the protectionary measures, and, Father, just everybody that has got their hands involved in trying to handle this, this virus situation. Well, we just lift them up to you. We ask that you continue to watch over them and, and give them the strength to continue to do their work. Lord, as we practice distancing, Father, we just pray that we personally become closer to you in this time, Lord, that this matters more than anything, and we're learning lessons each and every day on how to live a different life. Father, go with us now as we conduct the business of the meeting, continue to watch over the people leading our local municipality here. Father, we have such a team of people here that are working a lot of hours and spending a lot of time trying to do what's right, trying to follow this, trying to follow the state's guidelines, Lord. We just, we lift them up to you. We ask that you give them perseverance and strength, and, Lord, just continue to undergird them, Lord, to where they, they don't run out of gas, and, and, Father, it's, it's a tough time, and everybody's working hard and extending themselves, Father. We pray for all of our employees here in the town. We pray for our police department or fire department, all those out doing the work of our government, Lord, to, to continue to keep our, our town as safe as possible. We ask all these things in your name. We love you. Amen.
Amen.
Juneau, if you could lead us in the pledge, please.
If you will, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kevin, any citizens' comments at this time?
Not at this time.
Not at this time. Election of officers. Jeff, this is something that I kind of feel as if I would like a full commission or more here. Would it be appropriate, or can we actually defer this? And, and if so, just your thoughts on this.
I believe that under the circumstance, and, and as you recognize that we are missing some, and this is definitely unusual, so I believe that we'd be okay to defer this for another month.
Do you need a motion on that to defer, or can we just move it to the next month?
I think since it's an agenda item, let's go ahead and do a defer.
Just real quick, Jeff, if, if we did have to do a motion, we deferred it. Does that mean we have to do it in 30 days because we don't know?
No, just the next time. You're just deferring it until the next meeting.
Okay, alright, alright.
Is it any, well, any discussion on that?
No, no, no.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to defer.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on, approval of the minutes for the March 5th, 2020 meeting. Counselor, are they in order?
They're in order.
Does anyone, has anyone looked at it, or I guess we've all looked at it, does anybody have any comments, or, or any changes, or recommendations on that? If none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'm up to approve the minutes.
I have a motion. Regina, is that a second?
It's a second.
Alright, a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Minutes carried. Old Business. The first item is Jerry Butler, Andrew Subdivision Annexation and Zoning, PRD and C2, location 3782 Rocky Fork Road. Kevin?
Yes, as you stated, we are practicing our social distancing and trying to comply with the CDC guidelines, so I ask commissions to be a little patient with me because I'm here doing everything tonight, since we have less staff in, in the room tonight, so. But yeah, this first item is an annexation and PRD zoning as well as C2 zoning request. It's on Rocky Fork Road, just west of I-24. This is a, a request that you all have looked at a couple of different times. Did look at it last month and did defer it until this meeting. This is about 91 and a half acres total. The surrounding zoning consists of R1 and R3 in Smyrna and RM in Rutherford County. Current land use plan, it actually supports this entire area being a commercial development. Proposed land use plan, which is still near completion, but it hasn't been completed yet, but plans this property in kind of a gateway character area, which would support a mix of commercial uses and, and high-end multifamily in strategic locations. The proposed PRD portion of this is different than what you looked at, a little bit different than what you looked at last month, as far as the layout. The proposal, it is in front of you, is for 134 single-family lots on 40 acres, 160 townhomes on 10 and a half acres, about nine and a half acres of open space, and then about 31 and a half acres zoned C2, that would not be a part of the PRD, just have the C2 zoning. We did have a few comments. These are similar to what you looked at last month regarding acquiring a traffic study. It would be, basically be submitted as a part of the first development plan, which I'm, my understanding is they're looking at the single-family piece first, so it would be a part of that, submitted when that plaque comes in. They are, we had a same comment regarding the thoroughfare plan does show Green Tree Drive connecting directly to Rocky Fork Road, and a future principal material coming off the future interchange crossing in front of the property. They are showing Green Tree Drive still extending through the property, but they're basically extending it further south, or directly to the south, and then it would connect to Rocky Fork, the adjacent property to the south, when that develops. Staff did recommend extension as a gateway. Enos Springs Gateway Overly District to this property as a part of the annexation, and we'll still keep that recommendation. Number seven, there is, they are, we did say that sewer must come from a proposed olive branch gravity line. They are proposing a temporary pump station until that line is constructed and in the ground, and our utilities department has, has agreed to that, and they, they would be removing all that as once that gravity sewer is in place. Available fire flow is 1,200 gallons a minute, but it is meeting our fire flow for residential. However, the commercial area, when it develops, it would not be adequate, so it would require installation of the 12, and connecting to the 12-inch line, it's on the east side of I-24 for adequate fire flow there. We did have comment number 10 regarding the pavilion, that has been corrected and is now, has been addressed, so that issue is no longer there. The revised packet of information was in your package. We also have the hard copy there in front of you. It was submitted, kind of shows a revised layout. Housing that was, is proposed is, is as far as the, the size, the exterior materials, all that is the same as what you looked at before. We also did include in your packet, the, we did just kind of a, an estimate of what we expect the right-of-way that would be needed for the interchange. That is based on a, a drawing that T-Daw had done of a, of a potential interchange. We also looked at some other interchanges in Rutherford County, specifically the most, one that we felt was the closest would be the right-of-way at the interchange of Highway 99 in Murfreesboro. And we basically have a couple of different maps in there. One shows if they use the existing bridge location as the, kind of the center of the, of the interchange, and then one, if they kind of straightened Rocky Fork Road and come and build a new, on a new location, which is most likely, we feel, kind of where that would fall. So that kind of gives you an idea for this specific request, but also the other properties in this area, what their, a potential right-of-way need would be, at least. Helpers are here, or engineers here, if you have any questions.
Kevin, could you show the couple scenarios for the interchange, and I think what we looked at in the packet was a diversion diamond, is that correct?
Right, yeah, this, yeah, this is-
And just talk through these.
Yeah, the first one, which I put, put there on the screen, the first one is, again, using that existing bridge location. Our estimate was about roughly two and a half acres of this property, but in this loca, in this scenario, would be taken up by right-of-way. There, that's, again, that's just the scenario. If they build it on the existing bridge location, again, we feel like that's probably not going to happen, just because the age of that bridge, it would have to be replaced, and so most, the most likely scenario is it gets built further south. And this is the, kind of, again, roughly, almost a complete straightening of the road. It may not be that far south, and maybe south, but not quite that far. Who knows exactly where it'll be? That's just what we looked at. And then to this scenario, this specific property, it'll only lose a little over 15,000 square feet. We feel like this is probably the most likely scenario, as far as the construction scenario, just because, again, the age of that existing bridge, it would have to be replaced, and if you built it on a new location, again, you take out the curb, and you also can keep that, the existing bridge open while the interchange is being built, so you can keep that existing traffic flow moving, and then you open and build the interchange and open up the newer, new roadway at that time, and once that's done, you, you take out the old bridge. And so, that's kind of the scenarios that we put together and put there right-of-way maps.
And when you talk about extending the gateway overlays to this project, what would that involve as far as the exteriors or elevations of the buildings?
Well, again, assuming a commercial development, which obviously is what they're looking at here, you, there would be certain minimums as far as the materials. There'd be a 75% masonry type rule on the first floor. If you had a multi-story building, the, the upper floors could be maybe less, less masonry. No EFS would be allowed, would have to be a masonry or, or a hardy siding or something like that exterior. There's also some limitations on colors and different things like that as well. For the multifamily piece of it, what they're proposing meets those gateway, gateway requirements. This still requires masonry and siding, but doesn't have as high a percentage as the commercial structures.
Okay. Any other questions for Kevin? I was gonna say staff, but I'm gonna say, I guess you are the staff.
I am the staff today, pretty much. Charles is here, if you need him.
There you are, Charles, sorry. Or Charles. Thank you.
Kevin, this lined up a little bit more with what staff had recommended as far as the layout now.
Yeah, I think I like the layout better, and I also feel better after having gone, us going through that exercise of laying that right-of-way. We know more in line with what, how much land. We're not losing as much as I thought there might be, I guess.
And I know these are just estimated drawings.
Sure.
Probably the second one makes more sense than the first one.
Right.
With straightening Rocky Fork Road out, there's still a sliver of that property in there. How does that affect anything we do, or would it?
It, it doesn't really affect, other than the property being in the city, where it's, now it's not in the city. It's, we would, if something happens, if that property wants to be developed before the right-of-way is dedicated, we would, we would recommend against that area being developed, into that area. We would hope that that would kind of be the last piece of it that would be developed, and then it would be after that interchange.
And as purchasers of the property, I'm assuming they're very aware of that?
Right.
Right? In case we needed that?
In case we needed that, we would look at, of course, it would end up being a state right-of-way, but we would look at, at le, at minimum, setting aside that area for right, future right-of-way deposition, if not being dedicated.
I think the big thing that we talked about every time we've discussed this property is making sure that we get it right and protect the area that we need to protect in case that future interchange needs some of that space.
Right.
And that's been my major concern in the whole thing, and I know staff had a concern about the layout, and you just addressed that, so I appreciate them taking the time to come back and bring it in a different format where it makes it a little easier for me to swallow anyways.
As far as the townhomes, one-car garage, do we still have the parking pad as far as two vehicles?
Yes.
Okay.
What would the setbacks be? I know we're not there yet, but-
Well, the setbacks on, on all the, the townhomes and the single-family detached are 35 feet, yes.
Right.
And I think that addresses the parking issues that we're trying to eliminate as we go forward.
Right. And the streets within that townhome area will be public, so not always in townhomes are the streets public, but they will be public.
Okay.
This, I know this is what we think it's gonna look like, but the, this picture also has a road going into that little parcel that's in no man's land. I know the, the one we looked at previous did not, and it was kind of landlocked. What they would be able to do with that, if anything, because that's not a very big parcel there, is it, Kevin?
It's not very large, but I mean, it certainly, I would anticipate that those two tracts of land that are included in this annexation will most likely, I think at some point, they probably get bought by the same folks and, and develop together, is what I would anticipate happening. Certainly, this does provide access-
Right.
-to the, it doesn't provide access to the northernmost triangular piece directly, but it gets it as close as they can get it to them.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, guys, for working on that for us. We appreciate it.
We listen.
Thank you. We do appreciate it. Okay, the second item under Old Business is Site Plan Pyramid Event Center, 71 Mayfield Drive. Kevin?
Yeah, this is a site plan that you all, again, you looked at it last month and did defer it. There were several comments last month that still needed to be addressed, and so it was deferred. This is a, a building at 71 Mayfield Drive. It was an existing building. It's undergone a renovation as well as an addition to it, and converted from an auto repair business to an event center. The existing building was about 7,390 square feet, and they've added about 2795 to it, so the total is about a little over 10,000 square feet, 1,085. This would not, is not enough of an addition. That design review is required to be met. This is building did pre-exist design review, but it does require, still require a site plan review by this planning commission, so this was over 10% of an addition. They're adding about 7,300 square feet of paving for, for the use area for parking. You know, being the landscape from the problem, she was going with, as regards to that additional area. The zoning ordinance requires a parking for this use to be at 40% of the capacity of the building. They're showing 71 parking spaces, and then I believe there's like three spaces are showing for buses. So, there's not a, basically the capacity of the building dictates how much parking is required. The, they did revise the elevations to be, to match the existing building and not having the vinyl siding that they were proposing, so that we, that addressed one of the comments from last month. We had some standard comments that would, would remain in place. And then under staff comments, we asked them to submit the stormwater calculations, which they have done, and those, basic comments one and two are both to be reviewed by the stormwater department. So, they have addressed those, but they need to, still need to be reviewed by, by the stormwater department. Number three, regarding adding curb to the pavement cross-section, they've done that, so it's have the direct water into that rain guard. Number four, this building will, will be required to have a fire sprinkler system. That's related with an informational comment. Comments five and six, they have, was regarding, they had a proposed fire height that would have to be, it would have to be moved to locate within 100 feet of the FTC, and, and the FTC, which is fire department connection to the sprinkler system. It has to be at least 30 feet off the building. It appears that's been addressed. I would want to defer to the fire department to be sure they're completely happy with it, but it does appear that it has been addressed. The, the primary issue that is still kind of existing out there is the, the parking. The minimum parking requirement for this use is 40% of the building capacity. You know, in simple terms, 40 spaces for every 100 people. The building capacity, as calculated, and our building official Steve Smith did review this, and, and the plans that were submitted, he said were actually pretty close. They were a little bit off, they were pretty close, but he did look at it. The total building capacity is 446 people, and that's with tables and chairs. It actually would be 748 people if they just had chairs only and set it up like an auditorium style seating. They are proposing, or showing in their, I believe we've got those, they're kind of, their floor plan is tables and chairs, but that's not fixed seating, so obviously it could be, could be changed. Depending on which number you're looking at, that would mean translate to 178 parking spaces, or 299, if you do seating with chairs only. Again, they're showing, the plan did have 76 spaces, now they're showing 71 with those three bus spaces. I think they're saying, if you have buses delivering folks, that was providing parking for more people, so. Or ordinance really doesn't have a caveat if you have, for bus parking or anything like that. It's, it's typical 9x19 parking space for, for an automobile or a truck, or a bus, or anything like that. So, so that's, that's really the, the only, they got, this is one that was, like we talked about last month, it was begun without a, coming to us first, and so that's why there's, there are some issues that we probably could have headed off if we, if they had done that, but they didn't, so. There's really no way, unless they were to acquire additional property, for the parking requirement to be met, as, as the building as it sits today, right? If they, even if they deleted some of the additions that they've already added without a permit, you're looking at still needing over 100 spaces, so.
Because of the usage.
Because of the use of the building, right.
Questions of Kevin?
Well, just one, and I think I already know the answer. We don't have an example like this in town anywhere that we've approved in the last several years, do we?
Yeah, this particular, this type of use, we really haven't had anything like this, right? And typically, I mean, we've had other folks talking about it. I met with several different people thinking about doing something like this, you know, in a barn or something like, building a barn to kind of have a wedding-type event center and things like that. We really not, anybody really pursue it. And we did meet with, Steve and I met with the buyer and their real estate agent before they ever bought the building, and we talked to them what they needed to do, and for whatever reason, they didn't follow through with that, and codes popped in under construction. So, that's kind of where they're at. So, and this, obviously, even if you were to approve something, this or a different modified plan, they still gotta go through all the codes, issues that they gotta address with electrical and concrete being pulled without permits and those kind of things, so.
But we're so far apart on parking right now, it's ridiculous, right?
Yeah, it's, it, it doesn't come close, right. We're over 100 spaces short.
Yeah. So passage of this would be in direct violation of our ordinances.
Right. Only way, I mean, again, realistically, is if there was additional property around it that they acquired and to add more parking, which there is some vacant property around it, that's, that's obviously that owner, if they want to sell, you know, so. They have representation here if you want to ask, has anything to say or ask any questions.
Did anybody have any questions of representation that's here?
Is it okay if I speak there?
Sure, I'll, I'll, I'll let you speak. If you'll come up and give your name and address, please.
My name is Johnny Carlton. My address, three, three, four, two Bell Road, Nashville. I have spoken, I'm the general contractor, and I'm the representative. And I've spoken with the owners, and we all agree that we really don't ever fathom having more than maybe a hundred and eighty, a hundred and ninety people there at any given time. So I think that's kind of the issue. I think the building is larger than what we even really want for the capacity. I don't know how to solve that, but I know in the past I have seen something posted that, you know, the max limit in this particular facility would be whatever the parking would allow for. Because, I mean, there will never be hardly ever over two hundred people, and the seventy-one is pretty close to that. And I would ask for maybe some kind of exemption of that. I mean, I, I don't think we need, I think we have two solutions. We either need more parking or we're gonna have to take away some of the building, and it doesn't really make sense to take away some of the building. Because we're willing to comply with the capacity limit based on the parking spaces.
Kevin, how much building would they have to lose to comply with parking space?
If they had the, the seventy-six spaces, which the previous plan had, translates to a hundred and ninety people.
And that's the number he's kind of throwing out that that would be their maximum?
Right.
Right. So you get to a hundred and ninety people. If they take out the two, which is the, kind of what they're, they're labeled the main event area, recent addition, and the outdoor area, which they've got all the outdoor seating and all, I mean, that's about a hundred and, a hundred and fifty-one people, looks like. So that gets you down to about two ninety-five, but you're still, even, even in that main area, you're over two hundred people. Two hundred and sixty-four people. Well, then you got twenty-three calculated for the stage area, so you're, you're about two hundred, close to two hundred and ninety people if all they were using were just the main building as it existed before the additions. So as far as what the capacity of the building is based on the building code. Which is what we have to go by.
And based on my conversation, I mean, if there were more than seventy-one parking spaces in this given area, that's just way too many. I mean, it would just be kind of a fiasco, so we're really trying to maintain around that hundred and fifty mark.
I think the quandary that we, we find that we're in is that it's not necessarily that we don't want to see this, and then, believe me, it's very hard to turn something down. It's not an easy thing to do. However, we set a, we have a set of ordinances that, that we're bound by, and just from an enforcement perspective, even if there was a commitment that there would be no, you know, groups over a certain amount, I'm not sure how we could enforce that, and my, my concern is if there was an emergency situation that happened that because of the lack of parking, it may be difficult to get to, or that if we do have situations of parking that ends up on the street or in other areas, that that in and of itself could, could, could lead to an emergency-type situation that, that could potentially happen. And, you know, the vice mayor asked a great question. Have we seen anything like this before? And the answer is no, so there's nothing that says, okay, we, we've done this before, or there was any, any type of leadway or whatnot with the ordinances. The ordinances seem, well, they don't seem, they are very certain, and they're, they're, they're certain for a reason. And I can tell you that in things that have not been similar, but where we had a, a use that was different than what it was intended to be, we, we got into some bad situations in, in several different type of retail, restaurant-type experience, or, uh, I thought experiences, uh,
Situations?
Situations, thank you, is what I was looking for. And I guess that's what we're, we're hoping to avoid here. And I think the, the solution that I heard was either find additional land for parking or reduce the building size, and if reducing the building size is more of a burden, which I can understand, I think you guys are gonna have to come up with some more parking, or there may have to be a potential different use for this.
Well, and Tim also, you know, I've, I like to use our, our staff as a, as a guideline for our, us when we, because they do this every day, and we're, we come here once a month and try to take their recommendations, but hearing the big, big difference in the parking situation, we're not talking about ten parking spaces. We're talking about a lot of parking spaces. And in addition, you know, Tim brings up situations where it could overcrowd, and it's too late to undercrowd it at that point. And a sign's not gonna stop it, so. I hear you, Mr. Carlton, I hear you.
Well, I think what I would ask is for some help to see
Well, I think-
see how that problem can be solved.
I think Mr. Riggs, we just made the comment a few minutes ago that whoever is the buyer of this property and their agent came in and sat down and got some guidance, that was help, and somebody may not have listened to all that help, I don't know, but find yourselves in a situation now where our ordinances just don't agree here with the amount of parking that's needed, or as Tim said, the usage of it, if it's designed especially just to be an event center, that, that can draw a crowd. We all know that. And so we, we have to be careful. Our ordinances require us to do that.
Was there any option of maybe making a portion of it for the event center and maybe making another portion, like the rear portion?
That, that's a question for, to revisit with staff, I think.
For some other use?
I mean, certainly, that's, yeah, if you want, the property is on C two, get another use for it, certainly.
In the C two zone?
Yeah, that's compliant with C two zone.
Another use that may require very little parking, or?
I mean, certainly, I mean, we could, we'd be happy to sit down with you and talk about various other uses that could be in a building if, if the owner has other ideas. The way it's set up right now, the, the back, it was a separate building that they've kind of connected with the canopy. It's set up as, it's just being used for storage, with tables and chairs and whatever anyway, I mean.
Still got a parking problem, though, don't you?
Yeah, but, and they're still, but my point is, the capacity is already kind of low in that area because it's set up as storage, you know? The main area, even if you take away the additions, even if you go by what they've set up, just the tables and chairs is two hundred and sixteen people. So.
Still short on parking.
Still short on parking, based on, even if limiting it to just the, to the chairs that they're zoning and playing, which are pretty standard and probably a pretty accurate layout of what you would expect to see, so.
And where this is located, too, I mean, I, I could see a situation where there's not enough parking for some kind of special event, and now you're pouring over into the neighboring parcels or across the street where there's shopping center parking, and next thing we know, we've got a problem from those.
Well, there'd be a possibility, let's say, designating a portion of it maybe office space, and then maybe the other portion, the event center, to try to fall in line with the parking spaces.
Need to do the math on parking.
Well, we have, we could look at that. I mean, certainly that's something, option, but they'd have to look at the math, yeah. Because park, office space does have required parking as well, so you'd have to meet whatever the use is, has to meet the parking requirement, so.
Okay.
And it, yes, that may change things.
But for now, that's what's not in front of us.
No, right, you've got, it's an event center.
Any other questions from Mr. Carlton?
I like the idea that a group wants to bring an event center. I, I work in hospitality industry. I've been doing that since nineteen ninety-six. First hotel was Gaylord at Opryland. So I've done big hotels where there have been big events, and there's always parking events. Sometimes it's drive-in, sometimes it's valet, but it requires a lot of space. So I can see that overflowing at any given time. I like to say it, parking on the streets, and that's something you don't want to encounter. It's needed, but we want to go about doing it.
One more suggestion, because I know the back half of the building is probably gonna be used for storage and that type thing. And it used to be a garage. Is there any possibility of making that additional parking within that garage?
Defer to the-
I mean, certainly you can do structured parking in a structure, certainly. I mean, that's, I don't know how many cars you could get in there, but.
Or maybe redesign that a little bit to where it maybe, you know, maximize that portion of it for parking.
Certainly, that's something you could, could do that, if you didn't want to do that, certainly.
Thank you, sir.
Like indoor parking, but to maybe match the capacity level?
And the big thing is it would have to remain parking. It couldn't be skewed out to
Right, right.
to bring people into, you know, it'd have to remain parking.
And we'd still have to get the yield as far as the total number for the remaining, for all the uses.
Well, we could do the parking and stripe it, et cetera, to, to meet that.
I mean, I, I think staff's willing to work with you on talking to you about that.
And I think even another portion that they kind of covered that was a concrete area prior, that could even be considered, I think, as parking.
Well, they would-
Is that something?
It's played out right now. They're using it as outdoor seating. So, yeah, we, we'd be happy, if you wanted to have revised plans for, and all, we'd be happy to look at that.
Is that maybe the best solution that you can think of, or?
It's not the only one I can be, I'll be honest with you.
Short of purchasing additional layout.
The other one that I thought, if you actually divided the back portion off for a completely different use, maybe even divide it off and re-subdivide it. I don't know if that's a possibility. Re-subdivide it into like another parcel.
Again, I think that's something that-
Yeah, that's not gonna be us deciding that. That's-
Yeah. Well, I mean, I think even there, I mean, if you take away land for the event center, that's land, parking goes away, so. Well, I mean, certainly, I mean, I think anything can be looked at. If you had somebody, like, you're the engineer that did the plans, draw something up, they'd be happy to go look at.
It seems to me the best solution is to maybe use that one portion that's gonna be stored for indoor parking in order to achieve square footage requirements.
If that gets you to your numbers.
If that gets you to the numbers you need.
Otherwise, we had to take away some buildings, and that doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
Well, I, I agree with Andrew here. You know, we, we welcome the business. We, we think it's a good idea, but there's an ordinance involved.
I got you.
Yeah.
Maybe one other question. If there were some type of lease put into place for the additional parking of the dwellings in front, is that a consideration?
You mean added land lease?
Yeah, because, I mean, there's a lot of parking in that building that's in front there.
You talking about the car lot?
Yes.
How would you guarantee that there's no vehicles on that property parked?
Yeah, I mean, you would have to have, we certainly have people do share parking. I mean, that's certainly something that can be done, and our ordinance allows for shared parking. But there's parking requirements for the car lot, there's parking requirements-
You start using their parking, correct?
Yeah, and I can tell you that, yeah, and I can tell you this, working through the, the car lots, you're not gonna get marked nine by ten spaces. It's just not gonna happen, and we were, as far as that goes. Because we looked at that when we were looking at our car lots.
Right.
And that was one of the things that they, they did not want to do, which you would be required to do, so I don't know that that gets there, but I, I guess what I would encourage you to do is go back, talk to your engineer, get with staff here, and if you guys can put something together that meets our ordinances, you know, it's, it's something that, you know, Kevin and his team are happy to work with you with.
Okay, so, so really, take away some building or create some more parking, really.
Looks like it.
Right.
Or change the use.
Or change the use.
Which will still need parking. You just gotta know what the usage parking is.
Right, yeah. So is this something that could be done and maybe meet again next month, or is it, I mean, I think the, the-
How long, how long would he have to have before he'd have to submit a new idea?
Let's see, what is our deadline? He's got a little bit of time. I think I'll pull my calendar up.
About two and a half weeks or so. Three weeks.
Be April twentieth?
Yeah, so about three weeks.
For a May seventh?
Get it back in to be here for the next meeting.
Is this one we can defer, or do we do something on this last month?
You've already deferred it once.
So we have to make a ruling. List, could he?
He could certainly, if you turn him down tonight, he could withdraw, or if you turn him down, he could still come back either way.
So it's kind of like, we'll put it on, up to you.
Put it back on me?
Well, we can make, we can vote, or you can withdraw it and bring it back at a different time. Am I correct on that, counsel?
Yeah, he can withdraw, or he can vote on.
And if you vote and you deny, I-
He can still come back.
He can still come back.
You can still come back, either way.
And I'm not gonna really have to go through any different process, right, other than what we're talking about, just getting with you, right, Kevin?
Right, it's the same process.
Trying to figure out what will pass. I don't think I'll withdraw.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
All right, um, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion or any comments, questions? Seeing done, do I have a motion?
I move to deny the request.
I have a motion to deny the request.
You need a reason, counsel?
Well, I'd like one.
Based on inadequate parking.
Okay, I have a motion to deny based on inadequate parking. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
I've got about three seconds there.
Yeah, you crossed the finish line for what you did.
Okay, Andrews. I have a motion and a second to deny this. Any further discussions? If not, all in favor to deny, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is denied. Okay, new business. Annexation and zoning, Gwyn Farms, sixty-nine fourteen Lee Road and forty-six seventy-five Rock Spring Springs Road. Kevin?
So this is a request. It's for a couple of different things. One is an annexation, approximately thirty point eight acres, which is, is a two parcels. It's map fifty-one, parcels five and six. They are on the south, south side of, of the already approved Gwyn Farms PRD. And then it's also an amendment of the existing PRD, which is map thirty-two, parcel twenty, and map fifty-one, parcel seven, which is about a hundred and ninety point five acres. It's already been annexed and zoned PRD. So there's a couple, it's all tied together as one thing, one, one development request. Surrounding zoning for the annexation and, and zoning and the PRD amendment are both R three and R one in town and R M in Earthford County. Land use plan was supported, low density residential development of zero to four units per acre in this area. This PRD is proposed. Altogether would be four hundred and twenty-one single-family lots and two hundred and seventeen townhouses. There were, we had several comments, several have, have been addressed. The, the original PRD approval was granted before the town began requiring a thirty-five-foot front setback and seven and a half-foot side setback for single-family residents. They are requesting that they be allowed to keep that twenty-five-foot front and five-foot sides what was previously approved, and we do have two flats that have been approved with those setbacks already in phases one and two. So they are requesting that, so I want to bring that to your attention. Number five, the original PRD submittal that we received did lower the minimum square footage for the townhouses as well as the single family, but that has been removed, and they are keeping the same square footage as what was approved previously for both.
So five is removed?
So five can be removed, yes. Number six was to look at the, the design, the entrance to Dale Drive, which is the main entrance. Uh, number six, uh, was to look at the, uh, the design, the entrance to Dale Drive, which is the main entrance. Uh, the second, or the, what will be built as part of phase two entrance, uh, to, uh, or off of Rock Springs Road, which would be kind of the easternmost, uh, road. Uh, the, the, uh, previous, or the, the plan showed that the fire truck, uh, would be leaving the pavement as, and, and making that left turn in. Uh, the, uh, fire department did look at that. They, they, they have indicated that the, the truck used, uh, had incorrect information, so they've asked them to redo that. I did, just before this meeting, I did send that to the, the engineering firm to, so they can take a look at that. That's certainly something we can look at. That's not a, a, a big deal, I guess, at this point. As long as they can get that addressed before they actually start construction, we can see those construction plans. Uh, the, number seven, they had some parking shown within the public right of way. We've asked them to move that out, and they have done that. So, number seven can be removed. Um, number eight, the Harris property, which is the two tracks on Lee Road, uh, will be served, uh, will have to, uh, go to the proposed Oliver Branch sewer line. Uh, and so that will be, uh, part of this, and so they're aware of that. That's really just an informational comment. Uh, the utilities department, number nine, they had actually originally said that no pump stations would be allowed. Uh, however, there is a small area that's in the, actually in the existing, uh, developed or existing approved, uh, piece of the PRD. Uh, there's a small area that is, uh, impossible to sewer unless the sewer, I think Mr. Parker told me you have to get at least forty feet in the ground, uh, to gravity. And so they are, there is a small, will be a small pump station that they are, have looked at for a period. Um, ten, eleven, and twelve are comments from CUD. Uh, the area that is already within the town limits does lie within Smyrna's, uh, service area for water. The area that's requested to be annexed currently lies in CUD's service area. Um, there has been some discussion evidently between the developer and CUD about the possibility of the town taking over some of that area or possibly all of it. Uh, that has not been approved by either group, uh, by the town or by CUD's board yet, but I think that's been some discussions between the developer and CUD. There, the plan as it's shown, uh, I believe it might show up. There's an area, there's a creek, let's see if I can find it here. There's a, it's not really a creek, it's a kind of a wet weather stream, uh, that crosses the Harris property. Um, the proposal that's in the PRD shows that the area south of that would remain CUD and that the town would provide the area north. And that's, I think, in talking with the, the utilities department, that's certainly something we can do. Uh, we could actually provide complete fire flow for all of it. Uh, that's up to CUD's board, so. The current infrastructure on CUD's side, blowout and new fire flow, so I think that's part of it. And basically, there had to be some improvements made, and I don't know if that's in the plan right now. CUD isn't, I don't think it's in their plan. They have several improvements they're doing out there. I don't think this is one of them. So.
Does that require sprinklers at that point, or is there enough pressure?
If there's not enough pressure, the only way you could, I mean, with a sprinkler system, you can go to five hundred gallons a minute. It's about eight hundred. That's what their existing infrastructure is. That is, uh, that area is, or part of that area is, again, is included in phase three. So, it's, is a little bit further down, down the road as far as that way it would be developed, so there is some time when some of that, maybe those improvements can be made, or the discussion ensues about, uh, the town taking over all or part of that area. The, the plan of services that's in your packet says CUD, uh, because that's what is today, and so that's all, that's what I think, that's what we start to move forward with until there's a vote, a vote by the CUD board, otherwise, so. And I think that's all that I have. Uh, again, it's, it's still a very similar development as far as the, the housing, uh, and everything, the minimums, so since they changed that back to what they originally proposed, uh, it's sort of all brick, hardy, and cement siding, exteriors. The, the town, this does move, uh, the townhomes, where the original PRD were, were kind of in the center of the development, and this basically moves into the southern part of the development. Uh, and so all of the, uh, all the townhomes will be in that one area on the south side, the Lee Road side of the development. And the rest of the property, uh, would be single-family and about four different lots, widths and different things, but all single-family detached.
Kevin, is that south side addition a new addition to this parcel?
Yeah, that's the new.
So, it didn't fall under the previous PRD then?
Right, the, the area that's in yellow on this map is the area that's being requested to be annexed. Uh, that's, that's not the Gwyn property, that's the Harris property, those two tracks.
And by moving it there, uh, I know there'd be a traffic study, and just hypothetically, if it were to move forward, is there any kind of road improvement on Lee Road?
Certainly would, uh, we would want the traffic study to include, there was a traffic study done for the existing PRD. We want them to update that. This is more units, plus we're including Lee Road now where we weren't before, and so we want to amend that. Uh, they are completely agreeable to do that. And, and they suggested, and we agree, that, that we need to wait, uh, till traffic is back to a normal, uh, state with schools in session.
Great time to have a study done.
Yeah, yeah, for, for the, for the traffic is actually, where people are going to work, and, and people are going to school and all, which they aren't right now. So, and we agree with that.
So, because I know the question will probably come up at some point, whether it's here or later, um, with adding this to the PRD instead of this parcel where the towns are gonna wind up going, not being part of the original PRD, um, do we need to look at the parking there?
Well, uh, it's all, I mean, we do, uh, we do have one, I guess, recommendation on that. The original PRD for the townhomes uh, did have two parking pads in front of the townhomes. Uh, this one does, it had, only have the one, and so we would recommend that we go back to the two.
And are they still twenty feet?
It's, well, it's twenty-five.
Twenty, I mean, twenty-five feet, yeah.
But they did only, they only had the one, they had two in the original approved PRD, two spaces in front of each townhome unit. Uh, this one does show one, so we would recommend going back to the two, uh, to what, what was already approved, and that's been pretty consistent with what we have done, uh, on that.
And that's why I'm asking this way. It'll come up at some point.
And they also are, they do have basically one space for every two units of guest parking in that townhome area. So, there is some additional parking in addition to the two in front of each unit.
And that's kind of what we did previously as far as making sure that we had, I don't wanna call it all site, but away from the unit, and I, I think I'm still seeing that.
Yeah, that's still there. It's, and it's the same ratio of what we looked at on the previously approved PRD, uh, as far as that guest parking. But we do need to go back to that. My recommendation is go back to that two, two spaces per unit in front of each unit, which is what we've done on several of these in the past. And again, what was approved originally for this PRD.
Is that two spaces like a concrete pad space, or is that two parking spaces?
It's like two, like a concrete pad, basically, double width.
So, it's for each individual?
Each individual unit would have two, uh, two spaces in front. This one recommended.
Plus the garage?
Plus the, oh, yes, plus the garage, yeah.
So, it just became green space pretty much where those towns were before?
Well, there's some green space. There are some, also some, there are some single-family in some of that area.
Along the top and the northern side of it.
Right.
Yeah.
There, there is still some that are being developed, just, it's, it's single-family lots instead of the, the townhome.
Is that up on the hill there?
Yes.
That's why they had to move it, isn't it?
Kind of in the middle of the, the original development.
Kevin, what are your, your thoughts and recommendations about these changes?
Um, I mean, I feel like with the changes going back to the, the original, uh, size, minimums on those house, the housing, um, as well as with our recommendation being included regarding the parking in front of the townhomes. Uh, it's, it's pretty consistent from a density standpoint to what we had before. Um, we are, we're adding units, but we're also adding almost thirty-one acres of property too. It is a little bit more dense. It goes from like, I think it's two point seven to two point nine per acre. Uh, certainly still well within our land use plan for that area of zero to four. Uh, so, I mean, it's still, uh, the overall traffic pattern with the road connections to the east and to the west, and the, the main, the Dale Drive being connected to the south uh, there, uh, all the road improvements, which were, were a part of the original PRD, are still a part of this as far as the Rock Springs Road, the Signal at Waldron, all those things are still in place. They're not changing any of that. So, I mean, I feel, uh, it's an expansion of the existing approved development that's probably, uh, a better layout as far as the, the townhomes being where they're proposed to be located, which is where they were before.
Yeah, I like that one there, yeah.
Uh, as far as the topography of the property and that sort of thing, uh, so, I mean, and I feel.
It seems like there's a better traffic flow here with, with this.
Well, there's a separation too.
Exactly.
No issue at all putting with a, with a traffic side? I know there's a gas line that runs through there, right?
Right, there's some of that stuff that they'll have to avoid.
Yeah.
Uh, on that southern property, but.
Well, and, and my big thing with the towns, you know, we did this previously before we did any changing to the way we now accept these towns. These towns were just really in a different spot in the subdivision. And if we can have the double-wide parking, that's, that's a better than what we would have had up on the hill, right? And I think they had alleys up there, didn't they?
Their original plan did have alleys. Uh, we, they took those, just, yeah.
Going forward, I'd always like to see thirty-five foot setbacks, but this was approved previous to that, and they've just kind of moved it, acquired more property to move it.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the staff comments.
Uh, to include the, uh, double.
Double-wide.
Parking pad on the townhomes. I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the minds have a motion carries. Okay, still on preliminary flats, written commercial, fifteen seventy-seven Rock Springs Road. Other developer, Getreys, offering, uh, middle Tennessee yellow, so.
We're actually over Westover Phase Two first.
I'm sorry?
Westover Phase Two first.
I'm sorry. Let's, let's go there first.
Yeah, preliminary flat for Westover Phase Two, uh, this is a part of the Westover PRD. This is the second of the two phases of this development, so zone PRD on Rocky Four County Road. About twenty-five point six acres, eighty-five lots are proposed. Uh, we had, uh, about four staff, or I'm sorry, standard comments, so we need to keep, uh, all of those. Um, there are, uh, under, our staff comments. Um, we'd ask them to add, uh, kind of a driveway area and parking, uh, kind of off-site, off the road, I'm trying to off-site, but off of the right-of-way, uh, in that mail kiosk area. It's kind of in a curve. Uh, and so, um, we did ask them to, to move that area, to move the parking outside the public right-of-way. Uh, that is still, uh, shown as they had originally had it drawn. Uh, the HOA would be responsible under the, for maintenance of that parking area. Um, but it would be partially within the, the public right-of-way, uh, and also, and people would be backing in and out, directly in and out of the road at that, kind of in those curves, so it was.
Yeah.
Uh, our concern there. Uh, but again, they, they would like to keep it like they have it shown. Uh, comment number two, uh, Kennebec Street is the street kind of in the, on the very, the far east, uh, part of the property that would eventually stub in to the south, which was, as shown on the PRD approval. Uh, as they have developed those construction plans for that, they're basically wanted to dedicate the right-of-way, but not build that, that southernmost piece of that road because it would actually require them to get onto, uh, because the topography in that area would have to actually get into the, that adjoining property, uh, in order to build that piece of the road, uh, as far as from a grading standpoint. And so, they have, they've basically requested to not be required to build that portion of that street. Um, so, that's, it's just that southernmost, uh, piece of it. Um, the thousand gallons per minute fire flow, uh, can't be met at this time. This was approved, uh, as PRD approval did require that no houses would be built until that, uh, fire flow could be met. There is a, an upgrade underway, uh, that would create that, uh, fire flow. Uh, is, this, my understanding, as well, it's not done yet. It will be, is part of the, uh, an overall development that will be done in, uh, by, uh, I think, early twenty twenty-one. And so, um, again, that's part of the PRD approval. CUD did make a comment that they can only meet the five hundred gallons per minute right now. And it's, it's their understanding that the developer intends to install residential fire sprinklers. If that's what they wanna do, that's, they'd have to, they would really have to amend the PRD, because the PRD approval did require a thousand gallons a minute before, you know, uh, house permits could be issued, so. Uh, again, that was, that was a comment from CUD. I haven't talked to the developer director about that. So. That's, that's basically comments five, six, and seven are from CUD regarding this it is in their service area. Um, I think.
Tim, I'm gonna stay and follow your comments.
All right. Kevin, when you were talking about adding a, a driveway to the kiosk, where, where did you?
It was in this area, this is kind of their open space, kind of their playground area, that sort of thing. And there's a mail kiosk, it's right, right here. And so what we had recommended was just kind of add a drive and have some parking here for this open space as well as the mail kiosk and in that area, and it, it pulls those parking spaces just kind of away from this, this curve area here that we're. I mean, it's not gonna be a highly travel street, but you still would have people, if they're parked there, they would be backing out into the street, directly into the street, so a whole row of parking there, so that was our, kind of our concern. It's kind of a similar on the other side of here as well, the north side.
And then your thoughts as far as, uh, Kennebec Street, as far as, do we need to continue to extend?
It, it does need to be extended. I mean, if that is stubbed. I mean, that is stuff to that adjoining property. I understand the, the practical difficulty maybe of constructing it right now in that way. I think the alternative, what we would want to do is obviously dedicate the right-of-way and that we would probably have to have a bond to cover that, whatever, wouldn't be that much, but it would have to cover that cost. And if that's, they get to the end of the development and that adjoining property is not developing to where it could be connected, then we probably just have to convert that bond into something that we would hold and, and that it gets built when that adjoining property develops. Because otherwise, unless that adjoining property owner wants to allow them onto their property to construct it, the rest of that road, that's the only way it can be done really. Because we need to, I don't want tax payers or smarter or the adjoining developer to have to build a piece of street that this developer was to build. So that's how we have to cover that.
Any other questions or comments? Did you, if you give us your name and address, please?
Yeah, Thomas Stephan, 2925 Berry Hill Drive. So I'll respond to a few of the comments. As it relates to the parking, the on-street parking, I believe what we did was carry forward what we had done in Phase One. And so it was just being consistent with how that parking was laid out in some of the open space access points. I don't know that I'm totally opposed to pulling it out, but that, that was the genesis of why we continued into Phase Two. About the street extension on Kennebec, Kevin is correct, it is a grading issue. A culvert would be needed to make that connection. And so to tie that in, there's not adequate property within this community to make that connection. So we would most certainly be open to placing a bond or some other surety amount to make sure that that's constructed at the right time.
Okay.
And then just real quickly on the fire flow, we are currently working with CUD on getting plans prepared for Phase One. With the ongoing construction for their improvements along Rocky IV Conover Road and the timing, we feel like we may be in a position to only, only need 11 or 12 lots with a two-inch water service to supply the needed amount of water for fire sprinklers. I don't know exactly how that will work out, as Kevin mentioned, about the PRD needing to be revised. But we feel like that's an adequate supply of lots to serve until the CUD improvement's complete in the first quarter of 2021.
So that will be in Phase One?
That's right.
Because you guys are just wanting this primarily just so you can do masquerading of the whole site?
Yeah, and that is, to Kevin's point, that is the primary reason for this dismissal. The site doesn't balance on its own as a, as the first phase was laid out. And so really what we're trying to do is get the preliminary plat approved so we can grade the whole site. The infrastructure won't go in in Phase Two, I wouldn't guess, for at least 18 months at this point.
Kevin, you're good if we bond the one, Kennebec there?
Yeah, the street, yeah, that's, I would be okay with that.
Okay. What else do we have outstanding here?
The, I mean, it was a condition of that PRD approval that the, that those improvements that are underway would be completed before those first building permits were issued for, so it would be a PRD amendment, which would mean a comeback to planning and council amendment. That's something that was required by council as a part of that approval, so.
We're talking about Phase?
For Phase, well, for, it would apply to the whole PRD. They're looking at 10 to 12 lots in Phase One, but.
Right.
So it was part of the PRD approval as, as part of the zoning for this property was a condition of the approval. Sometimes I'm saying I'm opposed to doing that, I'm just saying it's, it's the process they would have to go through.
Right.
And there is an outside chance that CUD will be done with the improvements before the end of this year. So the timing could work that it's not even necessary to do.
So maybe something they want to hold off on even doing.
That's right.
Is that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
At this time, do you have an idea of proposed parking, which would be safer for the mail kiosk?
Again, I'm not opposed to, I think it's allowed if we pull the parking out of the right-of-way and the sidewalk out of the right-of-way. Is that correct, Kevin?
Well, I mean, our preference would be kind of eliminating that road, the roads of parking and then just having a driveway that comes off the road, kind of out of the curve and then having.
Like a, just do a parking lot then?
A little small parking.
Some of that cars are not backing back into.
Kind of a circle, kind of a circle in and out.
Or it could be that.
That could be an option.
Yeah, we, I don't think I'd be opposed to evaluating that. And I will say, I mean, they still have to make their way through staff level comments. So I would imagine we could probably evaluate that as we're going through that review.
Certainly we could evaluate, yeah. We could, once the construction plans are all, we could look at it then, but it would need to be shown, when the final plat comes in, probably would need to be shown then.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions, discussion? Do I have a motion?
Tim, I'll make a motion that will be approved with staff comments.
Okay. I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve with staff comments?
Yeah, I will, just if everybody's okay with that. On the one about the Kennebec Street, just amend that as an alternative, they can provide a bond.
Correct.
Instead of not requiring them to extend it.
That's what your motion included.
Right, yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And if we'll please record Mark is not participating or voting in the discussion. Thank you. All right, can I go to?
You can go to Britain Commercial now, yes.
All right, let's go to Britain Commercial now. 1557 Rock Springs Road.
So we're going to take a commercial break.
Let's take a commercial break. Owner developer Gateway Properties of Middle Tennessee LLC.
Yeah, this is, the next two items are the same property. This is the preliminary plat to Britain Commercial. This is the property, total property, all of it together is zone, some of it's zone C4, some of it's R1. All they're looking at dividing is the C4 portion of this. It's 6.75 acres, it's four lots. This already had received preliminary plat approval in December of 2018, so that did expire because of December of 2019. And so they did submit their final plat and we told them we need to resubmit. This is consistent with the preliminary plat that was approved in December of 2018. The only item that we have on this, we still, do still need to get the FEMA approval because they are doing some cut and fill in the floodplain there. That's been submitted to FEMA, they have not received the approval yet. So we are, we still need to get that approval from FEMA for that. But other than that, again, it's consistent with what you looked at, it already approved on their, on their plat back then. It's on, so that's all I got.
Okay, questions for Kevin? We don't know what's going here yet, do we?
We do not. Four properties.
They started doing some grading or anything over there? I thought that's.
There's grading there, that's because the barn was taken down and grading and all that.
Move to approve with staff comments. I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Final plats, unless I'm jumping ahead.
No, you're good.
Yeah. Britain Commercial, Kevin?
Yeah, this is just, again, the final plat that was submitted. Again, it's four lots, 6.75 acres. We had just had a few comments. We just have to add the owner's signature prior to submitting for recording. We did note that the fire flow here is more than adequate at 3,000 gallons per minute. And then, again, same as the preliminary plat approval, we do still need to get the approval from FEMA for the floodplain alterations so that that would reestablish or establish a new floodplain boundary here. And then we did ask them to show utility easement for the water line on Lot Four. Most of the water line is in the right-of-way, but in Lot Four, the water line is actually outside the right-of-way. We did ask them to show that easement and they have done that, so comment number four can be removed. That's all that I got.
And I think you said this is exactly consistent with what we saw about 30 seconds ago.
Exactly, yes.
Move to approve with staff comments. I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, still on final plats. Lee Bowman, resubdivision of lots two, three, and four. Potomac Place and Cheney Road. Owner developer John Lee.
Okay, this is three lots on 7.26 acres. It says frontage on Sam Reilly Parkway, Potomac Place, and Cheney Road. These lots have previously been created. However, this is to change those boundaries as well as amend and add to the ingress egress easement that would, that was provided to, to provide access to lots two and three. It now will actually go all the way through the property and connect to Cheney Road as well. And so it's, it's an expansion of that easement, that proposed connection there. We had a few comments, under standard comments, they, they have actually done number four regarding the water sewer plans and construction plans. We have received those, they still need to be under review, but they have submitted those. The under staff comments regarding the widths of all the easements, that has now been addressed and shown, that's to show the fire hydrants, that's been done. And we also did ask them to show the proposed access to Chase Bank. That's actually on the east, east of Potomac Place, but directly across where this access is going to be. We just want to make sure that those, that they do access line up with that. That's not shown on the plat, but it is shown on the construction plans we received and they do line up. I will point out that the access also lines up with the private drive on the, off on Cheney Road, which is actually goes into the Stone Ridge Farm Apartments. And so from a traffic flow standpoint, everything is lining up there. So that's all that I've got.
Okay. Questions for Kevin? No questions? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. On to site plans. First item is 230 North Lowry Retail Center, 230 North Lowry Street. Owner developer Richard Johnson.
Yes, this is a site plan at 230 North Lowry Street. It's in the C3 zone, it's also covered by the Lowry Street overlay. This is a retail building of about 4,000 square feet. It's part of a larger tract of land that is also already developed with a existing commercial building, so this will be a new building on the same tract of land. It does, as everyone's kind of familiar with this side of Lowry Street, it does back directly up to the CSX right-of-way in the back. The, again, the proposed building is about 4,000 square feet, which would require about 20 parking spots. They are showing 22 being provided. They are, and they are having, or do now meet the requirements for handicap spaces as well. And they, they are meeting the square footage requirements for the landscaping that is required as well. The building elevations are all brick, there's kind of two different colors of brick. The left elevation does show a metal roll-up door near the rear of the building. And they're also having an awning along the front of the building as well. This, as proposed, this does meet the Lowry Street overlay requirements from an architectural standpoint. I will, I will kind of go on into the standard comments and staff comments and kind of cover the landscaping as opposed to that. We had a kind of several standard comments there, we would need to just keep those, eight comments. Under staff comments, we'd ask them to show the correct ratio on the parking and they have done that and they are meeting that, so we can remove comment number one. Comment number two is regarding the clearance around the fire hydrant, that's been addressed as well, so that can be taken off. Comment number three, that has been addressed regarding the van accessible parking for handicap space, space on both ends of the building, per the building code, that's been addressed, so we can, comment number three off. Comment number four, the landscaping requirements as a part of the Lowry Street overlay are more than what we do for standard design review. And so they have attempted to meet those requirements as best they can with, within the parameters of the property that they're working with. But, so I do want to kind of point some of that out. We had kind of four comments under that, under that one specific comment. One, we'd ask them to show the boundaries of the landscape beds, they didn't have all those shown and that one has been addressed. The B is to show a five-foot wide landscape bed adjacent to the building, between the building and the sidewalk. They are, have not shown that in their request and, and the planning commission does have some leeway under the overlay to look at each specific situation, so you can look at that, just so you know that. But they are requesting basically to not put that landscape bed between the building and the sidewalk. We'd ask them to show the square footage of all the landscape beds. I couldn't see that, they indicated that it was shown, I couldn't find it on the plans. And each one must be at least 75 square feet. And then D, to show a five-foot wide landscape planting zone along the Lowry Street frontage, which would require a canopy tree over 50 feet and shrubs, as well as some understory ornamental trees kind of between the canopy trees. What Mr. Steele is here, he can address this, but I can just kind of, my discussions with them, they have tried to do that where they could for the parking, for the parking, between the parking lot and the, the street, other than the access aisles into the parking areas. They have not shown that where the building is located. And I think what they're looking at there is basically to put, because most of the drive aisle for this property is actually on the T-Dock right-of-way. And so in order to landscape in front of the building, we have to basically reduce the size of the building, at least 10 feet to have two five-foot, a five-foot strip next to the building and a five-foot strip in front of the sidewalk. So that's kind of what they're looking at there in that area. So, and that's kind of why they're requesting a waiver. We did ask them also, kind of the next comment, kind of on that drive aisle, we were concerned about the width of that drive aisle as it's left and basically it's, it kind of it's 11.4 feet and winds up to about 11.7 feet on the other end of the building. Again, that's on T-Dock right-of-way, so we did ask them if they couldn't meet that 22-foot wide minimum, which we typically have in a parking area, to have it as a one-way. And so they have shown one-way striping as well as signage so that, and it would kind of be the north side of the building if you're looking at. it would kind of be the north side of the building if you're looking at the plan, is to the right. They are proposing one other thing. They are proposing another access into the property here that doesn't exist now from that, so that's subject to T-Dot's approval there. But what they're proposing is to have the access for one parking lot on one side of the building, one way where you could come across in front of the building to come out at the other exit, because that's the only way you could get to turn left out of this property. Uh, there is a median on that one end. So it would allow for folks, if they're parked on that end of the building, to come down and come out at the light. You could also come in and out at that exit to come into parking for this building, or to go further south and into front of the existing building that is again adjacent to and, and on the same property. So that's, there's, again, showing that as one way because that's, it's not, it's not wide enough for two cars to meet there. Again, number six regarding the drainage pipe and the new driveway access, that has been addressed, so it can be taken off. The driveway ramp construction detail, I don't, I couldn't, didn't see that, so we do still need that. And then the, they had the, the floor elevation, finished floor elevation was, it was a typo, I'm sure, but it was, it was, it would have been way up in the air if it had been built as it was shown, so they've, they've corrected that, so comment number eight can be removed as well. Uh, one other thing I did notice today, um, that is, I think it's something that can be pretty easily addressed, I just want to make this comment regarding the dumpster enclosure detail. Uh, it says on one comment, says it will be painted con, concrete block painted to match the building, and in another piece it says it would be finished to match the building. Obviously, we want it to, it's a brick building, we want it to, to be finished with brick to match the building, so I wanted to make sure that that is clear. And just since it kind of, the detail sheet shows two different things, I want to be, be clear that that would be a condition as well, that it would be brick to match the building. Again, Mr. Steele is here. If you have any questions that I can't answer.
Questions for Kevin? Kevin, how far down is the access on the drive aisle to get out of there?
Well, the-
And if there, are you, are they proposing another one, did you say?
They're proposing one on the north side of the building, which is in front of this parking that's on, I say the north side if you're looking at the plans.
Can you use your pointer over there and help me understand?
Yeah, it's right here.
Okay.
That's the proposed new access. There's an existing access right here.
There already is one there.
There's already one there. It's actually a signalized intersection.
Right.
And just if anybody's, can't recall exactly where this is, if you know where the small building is in the middle of the parking lot, that's been a, a cell phone place, it's been a, a, or cell phone accessory place, it's been a coffee place, it's been different things. That's where this is located. Obviously, that building goes away if this building happens. So, but yeah, you have the existing access here again, which is signalized, and then it provide, you currently, you come in here and you drive along in front of the, the long building that's there already. Again, it's already on this, this track. What they're proposing is this would be kind of a roughly eleven and a half, twelve-foot wide, one-way access across in front of the building. You could come in here, if you need to turn left, because there's a median, you can't turn left. This will be a right-in, right-out-only access because of the median that's in the right, in the Lowry Street right of way. If you need to turn left, you would, you know, just come across in front of the building and come out at the light. Turn left to go to the other dri, to turn left. Or you can obviously come out and turn right or go straight across.
Obviously, that would require T-Dot approval, but is that a safe idea there? I mean, considering we got a skinny little drive aisle right there?
I mean, I think as, as long as it's, it's, well, all we can do is sign it and, and label it for, just on the pavement markings.
But it's right, how far is that from the signal?
It, it's, I mean, the edge of pavement.
Just distance-wise?
How far, sorry, what distance you're asking for?
Well, where the proposed new cut would be down to the signal.
Oh, it is.
Less than a thousand feet?
It's, oh, it's, yeah, it's a hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah. And so I guess I'm just, I don't know why we'd want to give people the opportunity to come out a hundred and fifty feet from a signal. We're closing those on the Sam Reilly Parkway as we speak.
Yeah.
So.
And it, again, it would be right out only, uh, I think the-
It'd have to be a right-out only, I get it.
Yeah, but.
Just wondering about stacking and all that on a busy day.
I mean, the alternative, I guess, would be to slide the building-
There's our-
To that, towards their property line, it had more parking on the south side somehow. But yeah, I mean, that's, it, it's parking a hundred and fifty feet.
If you had all the parking on the left side of it, like you're talking about move the building, that eliminates any access there. They have to go out at the light, period.
Right. If it had to, you probably would still have a, a, a drive, you would still have to come. Obviously, that changes your layout. You probably have to still have a, a parking set up similar, you're just moving it, so you're having to drive up and turn left into a row, multiple rows of parking, some hour and other, but that, that certainly is a possibility to, it could be done. Without that access, if you, to eliminate the access that you're talking about, that's, that's the way you would have to do that, but.
Steve, would you mind addressing some of the options? And you, I know you're going to give us your name and your names.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission.
It's, it's still Vice Chairman.
I'm Steve Steele with Huddleston Steel Engineering, and I live at four oh eight Division Street here in Smyrna. Thank you for inviting me up. I'm grinning because uh actually, that's how I had it drawn up the first time I drew it. I had the building uh up at the north end with all the parking at the south end. Two issues with that. One, my client wanted to have parking on both sides of the building to make it more convenient for the customers. Secondly, there's a power line, electrical line on that north end of the property that kind of bisects at an angle, that northerly uh parking area. If you can pick that up, it's a solid line with the E.
It's like right here.
I'm not sure we can relocate that. We'd have to check and see.
Middleton's Electric is just across the street.
Yeah, they're, you know, they're all, I mean, it's, it's across the back here, too. It's, it's all up and down through there. You know, that's something we'd have to look into, but I agree with you. Actually, I had it drawn that way the first time, so.
Because of the traffic and stacking issue?
No, not really because of that. Just uh, I just, I guess, blind luck, maybe. That's just the way I had it drawn. I don't think stacking would be an issue there because uh you mentioned Sam Reilly Parkway. Of course, this is not, obviously-
Yeah, we're not crossing over.
It's not same, you know, it's not Sam Reilly Parkway. It's not that volume of traffic.
What's the op, what's the uh odds of getting a T-Dot cut there, do you think?
Well, if we don't get it, this plan can't go forward.
Right, but what, what do you think the odds are, just your experience?
Uh, I think they're good.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I really think we'll get it.
So T-Dot will look at the safety matters as well?
Oh, absolutely. It's, it's subject, and we have a note right at that entrance. I forget what it is, but we say, see the note on the plan, it-
Note thirteen.
And it says there's, that's not a lucky number. It says there'd be no work there without their prior approval.
Right, yeah, that's all that.
So it's like, we want to come to you first before we go to them.
Well, the fact that you're not, there's a median there.
Right.
So the fact that you're not trying to cross over and turn left-
Right.
Gives me a lot of comfort. Uh, just coming out in the right only is a lot less dangerous, but.
I know y'all were mentioning earlier that aisle in the front, uh, and I, thank you, Kevin, you did a good job with explaining what we're trying to do. We're, we're not adding any pavement on this lot. All that pavement is there today. In fact, we'll be removing pavement, putting the landscape behind them, so that, that aisle way is there today. We're not getting any closer to the highway.
I like the fact that we're getting landscaping, that's-
Yeah.
You go down Lowry, there's not much landscaping in it, so.
My uh, my owner, actually, I'm remembering now when I first drew this up a few months ago, he wanted a bigger building, but I couldn't get enough parking on the lot for the building, so we had to reduce the size of the building. If I have to push, the only way I could get the land, the foundation plannings by the building between the sidewalk and the building and a, and a planter out by the road, I'd have to push the building back, and I can't push it back because of the railroad right of way. So it would go from being about forty feet deep to, as Kevin mentioned, maybe thirty, which is not, not a very economical building and not always the most attractive building, if you will, as it gets too thin, as you look at it from the end.
Steve, this is speculative at this time as far as-
As far as I know, that's correct, yes.
Okay, because I, I, I noticed there was a mention that if we did, uh, right now, we're saying restaurant, I mean, retail, if it were a restaurant, I noticed a note in there as far as a grease trap. So I guess my question then, uh-
We, I have no, no, no knowledge of a restaurant. Staff told us that if it was a restaurant-
Yeah.
We'd have to have a grease trap, so that's why we added that note.
Okay, and then I would imagine parking could potentially be a concern as far as the number of spaces if-
It'd be absolutely a concern.
Yeah, I don't know if you'd get it in there for a restaurant. Exactly.
You'd probably need forty spaces instead of twenty.
And your owner's aware of the challenges there?
He is. Actually, my, the guy I'm working for, his father owns quite a few of those buildings down through there.
Okay.
And also, if you add that new entrance coming, I mean, traffic on Lowry Street isn't what it once was now anyway, but there's a light closer to McDonald's.
Yeah.
So coming out and turning right should be pretty easy.
Yeah, yeah. And the more I think about not crossing over, there's the medians, bigger concern there. Any other questions for Mr. Steele while he's up here?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Steve, real quick, was, was there any discussion on the property next door has an existing building on it as well, correct?
Uh, which next door? To the right? No.
Is it empty lot as well?
Oh, no, you're asking me if there is a building?
I think it is.
Yeah, I think it is.
I think it's been vacant for a while.
I think you're right.
It's, it's a vacant building.
Yeah.
Okay.
But there is a building there, okay.
I don't think my people own that building.
They don't.
They don't. The property here, uh, the parking lots, of course, they're open now, and it goes all the way down pretty much to the bridge.
Right, right.
Um, that was the only thing, is that next parcel, do you think, have they talked to this property owners if they want to open that up to make that, is there any discussion there?
Uh, no, I don't know.
Where that parking lot could continue right on up to?
To the right as we look at this plan? I don't know. We'd have to ask.
It still gets you two exits out of there. I, I'm not sure they'll, that building's been sitting vacant for two or three years now.
Yeah.
So I'm, uh, there's been some signs of something's coming in there, but I haven't seen any activity lately in it.
You know, I, I kind of like, since our aisle is narrow, I like the one-way traffic, and we've got it, I think, well marked with painting and signs, and it flows with uh Lowry Street. It's not, you don't feel like you're driving against traffic, you're flowing with traffic. Whereas two-way traffic, that close, could be uncomfortable for people out in, on Lowry Street.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Questions? Based on all the comments we have, it meets the Lowry Street overlay that we've put in place?
Yeah, the only issues really are four B and four D, those two landscape areas in front of the building. Other than that, yes, it does.
Further questions or comments? Could, Kevin, this, uh, the retail shop facing here on the left, that's a door awning there on the side of the building? If a, uh, they wanted to do a pickup, food only, no dine-in, that wouldn't meet any kind of parking or anything, would it?
Well, it would have to be, it still had to be, you'd have to have parking, but uh, but yeah, certainly.
Would that meet the same parking as a dine-in where you'd have tables and setup if it was just a pickup only?
We, we don't have, we don't differentiate in our parking for restaurants versus if it's a pickup only or if it's a, a, a fine dining place where you might be there for an hour and a half, so they might want to look at that, but as of right now, we don't have any difference in that.
Any further discussion? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a staff comments? With staff comments? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments and a second. Uh, any further discussion?
Just for clarification, we're approving it as it's drawn, right? So I think, which was signed, I just want to make sure and clear that we're taking off four B and D, which is a, is that?
I think that's the way you made the motion, that's why I answered it.
Yeah, just wanted to be sure.
Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye's happy. Thank you, Steve. Uh, final site plan of the evening. Veritas Federal Credit Union, six eighty-five Keith or Ken Pilkerton Drive. Owner, developer, Terry Crowe, Veritas Federal Credit Union.
Yeah, this is a site plan for a eight thousand three hundred and thirty-two square foot branch office of, for Veritas Federal Credit Union, I believe is how that's pronounced. Uh, it's at the corner of Ken Pilkerton Drive and Sergeant Asbury Hallway in the Smyrna Commons Development. It would have to be, this is part of a larger property that would have to be divided before uh, building permits could be obtained. Uh, it's just a lot is, certainly larger than what they're actually going to utilize. Surrounding zoning here is all C two. There's various commercial uses around it as well as the TCAT and then the apartments across the street. They are proposing uh to have access only to Sergeant Asbury Hallway. The original drawing did have an access to Ken Pilkerton Drive, and they have removed that access. They are meeting our requirements as far as the square footage for landscaping as well as parking and handicap parking. The uh architectural elevations, so a mix of various things, including stone veneer, fiber cement panels, interlocking metal fluted fascia panels, and they have some information that's, to, yeah, describe exactly what those are, as well as a composite metal panels. Metal is not allowed under designer view for commercial structures, but they, again, they want to talk to you about that. We had uh about six standard comments, which we would need to keep those. Under staff comments, again, uh, the metal panels are not allowed under designer view, and so we, we did recommend changing those to an, an, uh, material that does meet designer view. Uh, comment number two, uh, we had concerns about the access to Ken Pilkerton Drive because of where it was going to be located and with the median in Ken Pilkerton. We asked them to either eliminate that or to shift the median opening, and they chose to eliminate that access, and so that one has been addressed. They had an area shown for parking of repossessed vehicles for sale. Since the C two district does not allow vehicle sales, we did ask them to remove that, and they have done that. And then we had, asked them to show the size of all the gas lines, and that has uh been addressed as well. So really, everything's, has been addressed and- as well. So, really, everything's, has been addressed with this, other than the issue with the, the metal panels on the outside of the building.
Kevin, help me with the metal panels that you're talking about. Where are they?
Okay. If you look at, what you have in front of you is A6.1, which is all the elevations. Let me just show you, this is correct numbers. Metal, it's indicated as basically on as 6.05, and is the metal fluted panels, and then the, the other one I believe is 6.0... 6.0, yeah, 6.05, 6.06. If you look at the drawings, there's an area shown, if you look at the, at the drawings, they look like, it looks like concrete blocks, but that's the actual metal panels, the fluted metal panels. The composite that they're talking about is really around the top of part of the building, like over the drive-through area, and then also on other parts of the building as well. It actually, if you look, if you look directly at it, it almost has an EFS-type look to it. I know it's a metal panel, but it almost has an EFS panel type look to it. Then, except that's, that's really kind of a border along the top of the building and over the drive-through area. It's not over the entirety of the top of the building, it's just over parts of it, and then over the drive-through. It's, I don't know what a percentage of this, this showed is that metal panels, but it's a pretty large percentage at least. A lot of it is stone or the fiber board, cement board siding. There is a pretty significant piece of it is those metal panels. And again, they have, they want to talk to you about that as far as explaining why they want to use it, and what it actually, maybe a little bit better than I can is what it actually looks like with a sample or something like that.
Who's here to talk about that? Can you come up to give your name and address?
Yes, business address, I take it?
That's good.
My name is Derek Moschek. I, with Al Keely Construction. Sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
My name is Derek Moschek with Al Keely Construction, 500 South Ewing, St. Louis, Missouri.
Okay.
And this is the, the interlocking tile that we're proposing to use. As you can see, it's got a little bit of a, little bit of a texture. It does have a bit of a proportion of a block, but with a lot more interest. So, our goal was to have something that was visually interesting, and not necessarily large flat panes of EFS or stucco. And the color is actually more of a light tan color, very consistent with the buildings that are around it, keeping in the earth tones.
And if I'm understanding you correctly, you're saying you're doing this just from a visually pleasing architectural look versus...
Oh, there's that, there's that. We were going to have enough of it. Client was also hoping to be able to avoid the monolithic look that the EFS would give, so we wanted something, like I said, that was more textural. The Nissan Training Facility is, I'm sorry, I'm way out to the side here holding this. The Nissan Training Facility is...
You can put that down.
Is directly adjacent. Getting a little nervous about it. The Nissan Training Facility is right next door as well, and it, of course, has a bunch of metal panels on it. So, what we're trying to do is be very much so in keeping with our neighbors around there, while having a visually interesting texture and pattern.
What other materials could potentially satisfy something that's visually interesting or architecturally interesting, other than...
Excluding, excluding the EFS or stucco, which seems to be rather prevalent in the area, we're rather limited to masonry's.
Yes, sort of brick or stone, veneer or siding, the fiber cement siding, which they are using stone and this fiber cement siding on this building as well, for parts of it.
Which is more of a traditional look, I think, than...
Uh, there are different types of fiber cement, although I saw some of the engineered products seem to also be excluded, so I was a little confused as far as if I could use those as well. But they do make some that are like eighteen inch wide by six foot long. That would be another alternative. Again, I like the, the scale and the texture of this particular product, so we're hoping that you'd see it as...
It's eye-pleasing. We, we just want to make sure that we stick with our design review like we've asked all the other people around in that same location to do, so, I think you can come up with a good blend with a lot of the approved materials that we have. That's just my opinion. I like what that looks like. I hear it rattling pretty heavy, too, so.
I mean, it's, it is an upgrade material.
Yeah, and I think that's my, I'm not going to say issue, but I guess it's a concern or whatnot, is that we stay as true to what we, what meets our design review, especially for this area, and especially if we were looking at a metal product that wasn't allowed, I'm not so sure that another building couldn't come in that wouldn't have anything as pleasing or look as good.
Industrial problem.
Yeah, we could, you know, maybe even just get into that industrial...
Yeah, I was trying to stay away from the industrial.
Yeah, and that's what I'm afraid this might...
Currently, I think that falls under our industrial design review.
Yes, certainly, metal is allowed in industrial districts, yes.
I don't have a problem in the world with not egging it out onto Ken Pilkerton. There's nowhere to go, really. It's all median there, right?
Yeah.
So, the building here, I think I've got this correct. It will face the same way the others do, get the sidewalk, you know, they've drawn that up. But we've had one or two go over there and turn their buildings around fast, and we want to make sure we don't make that mistake. Checkers, or whoever that was, that came in there and built their restaurant backwards.
They're actually, the front door is really going to face Ken Pilkerton.
It is, but it's... Oh, you're talking about here?
Yeah, yeah, this one. This is going to face Ken Pilkerton. The access is going to be from Asbury-Hawn. But either way, it's, I mean, it's a corner line. I think either way we'll be fine from that standpoint.
We all decide what sidewalk to line up as you carry on down the street?
Right.
I have a question regarding the traffic flow coming in off of Ken Pilkerton, and then turning left into the credit union there.
Yeah, you actually, you would not, if you're coming, if you're on Ken Pilkerton, and if you were to get to Asbury-Hawn, you would turn left into Asbury-Hawn, and then turn left into one of the two access points. Most likely, from that direction, you would turn into the first one, and that would allow you to get into the drive-through lanes if you needed to do that, or park and walk in. There was, yeah, the, the original plan did have an access to Ken Pilkerton, and it was, you were coming out at whether the median was located, and we, we were concerned about people coming down Ken Pilkerton and trying to turn left.
To go in the back way.
Coming in the wrong direction.
Yeah.
And so, coming into the, that's a left-turn lane and whatever. You know, that's why we, you know, if we removed some of those of that median.
You'd almost have to put a right out, don't we?
So, anyway, we kind of looked at it both ways, and they did just remove that access completely, so it's not an issue now.
So they're going to circle the bank to get out.
So, traffic stacking would not, if you're coming and making a right turn to go into the bank, turning on to, is that Saint Ashbury?
Yes, Sargent Asbury.
So that wouldn't be a problem if traffic was, were stacking to turn and then turn left into the bank?
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, there could be, if there are people stopped at that stop sign, I guess there could be a conflict if somebody wants to turn left there, but they could come to the other exit, come and turn left at the other, if you're blocked. I guess in a perfect world, that access would be a little bit further out down, but for them to be able to get people into the drive-through, that's kind of what they needed it, what they needed it to be.
I'm Jeff Connor with SNF8.
Maybe you'll give us your draft, Jeff.
Yeah, sorry, we recently moved offices, so I don't, I don't have it quite memorized yet.
You can get it close.
Let me find out what it is here. It is 658 Grassmere Park Drive, Suite 100, Nashville, Tennessee.
All right, thank you. Go ahead.
Um, we, as Kevin was saying, we did have an entrance there. It was going to be, you know, you'd make a left turn or a right turn. We did change that to a right-in, right-out, but then we got the same comment back. We just didn't want to risk not getting approval, so we, in good faith, we removed it. But if that's a possibility, we'd love to, you know, put a right-in, right-out back, back there at that, that same corner.
You're talking about off of Ken Pilkerton, in the back?
Right.
Yeah, or the, the other side?
Right, right.
Kind of where the, where the driveway comes behind the parking lot, it was coming straight out to the road.
Well, currently, we're making, we're making them do the whole bank circle, right?
Right.
I mean, I guess you could come out from the drive-through and turn right and get out.
Yeah, you can come out from the drive-through. On either end of the building, you can come out or go in.
Could you show that picture?
Where, where it's, where it's at on there?
Site, the site overview?
Yes.
Oh.
It's a...
There you go.
There you go.
Let me, let me think, I've got that, see if I, I mean, it means, right, there, there's a, you can kind of see it on this here. I mean, here's the overall big picture here. This is where it's at. This is your median right here, and so this access was going to come right here. And they did show it, I mean, as a right-in, right-out only. And we were just, because it's so close to things where people could shoot across there, try to make that...
Oh, yeah.
Go against traffic, that was our concern.
Yeah, I got to tell you, I share a similar concern there. You know, I guess I'm not as much concerned about stacking because of the, the drive that circles the building. I think that's enough to get vehicles on and off.
Shouldn't back up at the bank.
It shouldn't back up.
Unless the drive-through has a lot of customers.
Wish I'm sure they hope it does.
But you can, you can go straight in. You don't have to turn to the drive-through. It's wide enough there to circle either way. So it's about twenty-four feet all the way.
Yeah, you can go all the way around.
All the way around, yeah.
There's not an issue there.
Just out of curiosity, I guess I'd go back and look. What's the drive-through actually built out of?
It's the, it's a different metal panel, but it is a metal panel.
Is that permitted under designer review?
Well, I mean, yeah, we had the same comment for that. There's two different metals that they're showing on this plan, and the one that's over the drive-through and in that area, I feel, I mean, just looking at it...
It's an awning, right.
It's an awning, plus it's, it actually looks a little more like an EFS or whatever they're typically used to, I guess. I mean, this is, it's a metal, I mean, it does have a somewhat of a, I guess you could say, a hardy floor type look or something like that, but it's metal, and I guess, I don't know, I'm not a construction person, but the durability of it, does it paint fade, all that kind of stuff? Can it be painted long-term, I guess, is a question I would have with it, I guess. We know the fiber cement board is very easily, can be painted and maintained pretty well, so.
Kevin, you said the, the front of the building here is facing Ken Pilkerton, so...
If I could offer up one point of clarification real quick. Actually, you can see it, it was removed. It was one of the comments, and I just want to be clear on what the intent was. The concrete pad that you see being shown, it's kind of like the very first two parking spaces, that was actually to profile the latest model from, from Nissan, rather than being like a sales tool or anything like that. Being that the credit union does serve that, that membership, they wanted to show it off a little bit. So that was the intent behind that pad, is that, and using concrete basically acts as like a nice little picture frame.
Okay. That's not what we were told, so. We were told it was to, for park repossessed vehicles for sale, so.
We're eliminating that possibility anyway.
Yeah, that's, which is not allowed.
It's not allowed, yeah. So, if they wanted to display a car, I guess, I don't know, if it's not for sale, maybe they could do that, but the vehicle sales piece of it was what we were concerned about.
Could anything be displayed there, other than a car? Could they display anything there? I mean, it's kind of a pad to display, right?
I mean, they, they can't, they can't display it for sale. I mean, the sales aren't allowed, so.
And it can't be a sign.
Can't be signed, or, right.
May I?
Sure. Can you give us your name and address, please?
Hi, I'm Terry Crowell, 105 Driscoll Court, Smyrna. The particular pad that's there, we serve Nissan and their affiliated businesses as their credit union, and so our hope was that Nissan would keep a rotating model there that, that would change periodically. They're not a vehicle for sale, that we're not planning on selling anything. There would never be repos that we would sell there. It's more of a tie-in for our field of membership, so that Nissan employees would see their product in front of, in front of our building as a display. So it's not a, it's not a sales tool. It's, it's more of a tie-in for that field of membership.
Any additional questions for Kevin, or Charles? If not, do I have a motion?
I move to approve with staff comments and materials all to meet design review.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments and with all materials meeting design review. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Kevin, we have a zoning ordinance amendment, agricultural accessory structures.
Yeah, this is a zoning ordinance amendment to the text, again, to the ordinance, amend Article 3, Section 3.100, accessory use regulations. It has been requested by Rob Thompson, who lives at 602 Rock Springs Road, and basically would change the provisions of the ordinance for detached accessory... we changed the provisions of the ordinance for DTAS accessory buildings that are used for agricultural purposes. Would remove the size limitations, but would require a parcel to be at least 15 acres in size on the green belt for it to be applicable. It would still require structures to be located at least 10 feet from any side of your property line and behind the physical structure. Did include the letter that Mr. Thompson had sent in to me, kind of requesting this, and then as well as the amendment. We have provisions in our ordinance now for agricultural buildings, they are limited to 2,500 square feet currently, whether that's one building or multiple buildings, they go, next total will be 2,500 square feet. And there are currently only five acres of land, so I do think the 15 acres, if we're going to do this, is a good, a good thing to do, because we did just recently change the ordinance regarding, if you have less, greater than five acres, you can go up to 2,400 square feet now, just regular accessory buildings, so I think having, putting the 15 acre provision in there, and it also has to be on property that's, that's in the green belt, I think is a good provision, and I think is a good amendment to consider.
Kevin, was that the same gentleman that bordered the properties on Rock Springs that we looked at rezoned? He came in and spoke? I thought I recognized his name. I'm sorry, what are your thoughts on this change?
I mean, I think it's a good change, I think, I think for farms, through farms, if they're 15 acres or larger, 2,500 square feet, if you really are farming and kind of need a hay barn or something like that, that may not be big enough, so.
It does sort of lift the burden off of the farmers that are in city limits, yeah, have parcels that long. Any other comments or questions? Do I have a motion? Let's move it with staff comments. A motion to approve the zoning ordinance amendment with staff comments, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes happy. April bond review.
Yeah, we got several this month, I'll try to hit those quickly. Hidden Hills, Section 4, Phase 1, this is just a completion of a temporary turnaround, I did talk to the developer, they were trying to get that finished, but the rain has delayed it. They did ask for a short extension, if they're not able to do that, and we are okay with that, so we would recommend a three-month extension, if they're not able to finish by April 11th and release it, if they are able to get it done. Creekside, this is primarily a major sewer line that had to be extended to serve the Creekside Apartments on Newell Lane, that is done, but we are, do want to keep it, or reduce it to $10,000 and extend it one year as a maintenance bond. Patton Retreat, Phase 1, this one is about 92% built out, it's, still got quite a bit to be done there, primarily on the street and drainage side. I was unable to speak with Mr. Etheridge on this one prior to your packets being delivered, and so I don't know exactly what their timeline is. Since we've already had this one two years, I would only recommend a six-month extension. Park at the Meadows, Section 3, I was able to speak with Mr. McClellan in the past week, he did request an extension of this, we have only had it one year, they're about 75% built out here, so I'm okay with, we would recommend a one-year extension there. The next two are Lennox, Phase 1, Section 2B and Section 2D, these are the, both of these, this is the end of the maintenance period, and everything is in good shape, so we would recommend the release of both of those. Buckingham Flay, Section 2, Phase 2, it's about 50% built out, I was able to speak with the developer, and they did request an extension for that, to they get more of those lots built. Again, we've had this one two years, so we would recommend only a six-month extension there. And then Woodcrest 4, it's about 80, 85, 86% built. Did, again, speak with that developer, he did indicate that that is on their agenda, is to get those finished, to be finished with that one this year, and did request an extension, and again, we've had this one for actually three years, so would not extend, would not recommend an extension more than six months for that one. That's all I got.
Any questions for Kevin on the bond review? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Have a motion to approve the bond review, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Staff comments?
I don't have anything else.
Any other business, counselor? Anyway from the commission?
Good job, Tim.
Thank you. Please, everyone, stay safe. You know, again, our thoughts and prayers are with our town, our employees, I know we're going to come through the other side of this, be stronger when it's over, until then, God bless. We're adjourned.